I'm kind of a nerd about the tutors and the plantagenates.
I got that from the bow tie.
Okay, yeah, so I know, so, so, so I know more about them than most Americans.
This is the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards. I haven't done an episode in a while. We're coming back with school board episodes. I'm gonna at least try to do all four at-large candidates. And you know what at-large means? It means everyone in the city gets to vote for the at-large candidates. I think there are four on the ballot. Two will win. And my first guest of those at-large candidates is Colin Beechy, running for school board at-large in Minneapolis. Welcome to the show, Colin.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Local politics has been a mess in Minneapolis the past couple of years. It's not, it's, it's very stressful. And school board in particular, it's not like, it's full-time work, but not full-time pay. So you're not doing this for your mental health necessarily?
Clearly.
So I imagine there's an interesting origin story about Colin Beechy, about a lot of people who run for an office like this that makes you passionate about, passionate enough to like, do this to yourself.
Yeah.
There can be a lot of things that are not great for Colin Beechy personally because you decided to do this. So tell me your origin story. Like, what are the formative events either in the recent past? Or like, you know, go back a little further if you want, made you want to do this?
Yeah, so just like I'd like to share with a lot of people, I come from a family of educators. And both my grandparents, both my grandmothers, my dad was a public school teacher for 35 years. We now have nieces and nephews in the profession, uncles and aunts. And so it's just kind of part of who we are, who I am. I've never really wanted to do anything else. I've been a public school teacher for 21 years. I started down in Bloomington, spent some time in central Minnesota, took a little break from teaching for a while, worked at a couple of different community colleges, came back to teaching. The last eight years now that I've been teaching here have been back here in Minneapolis. And I think what the big pushes that kind of got me here really kind of started in 2020. After everything that was going on, you know, I know everyone had their own, you know, went through whatever they went through, you know, for me, I had a pretty rough time for a while. And but just coming out of it, I just kind of wanted to know, or just, you know, I just kind of had the feeling that I, I want to do something more. I wanted to have a bigger impact. Not that being a teacher, you're not having an impact, but I just kind of wanted to do something more. I started being the equity lead at our school. And so we're working on some culturally responsive teaching practices that we want our teachers to be implementing their lessons, make sure that's more reflective of our population. And then really the big, the big thing, kind of the final straw was the, was the strike. And just not necessarily this detail or that detail, or this person said that, or this person said that. But it just was a general overall feeling that like, you know, no one has our back. No one has our back. And so, you know, I, when I was thinking about doing this back in 2020, I was like, you know, 2024 would be the first time that my district is up. So, you know, I'll get things in place and slowly move on to do that. And then, like I said, it just, it just kind of, my conversations with my partner, my conversations with my, you know, few of my really good friends, just kind of the why not turn, you know, or what if turned into a why not? And so just kind of threw my hat in the ring. And I just, as I've been talking with people, you know, there's a lot of people who are feeling the same way that I am about some things, just in general. But I just feel like, you know, being a teacher and having this experience for 21 years, you know, I know what happens when all of these policies and things are made. I know what happens on the ground. And I think too often that has been forgotten. And like I said, I just want, you know, our thousands of teachers and students to, to just know someone truly does have their back because I've been in the trenches with you for the last eight years.
So when we look ahead to the next couple of years, your next four years, the term that you're running for, and you think about things that will make people mad at Colin Beechy, the school board member, like what are the big controversial questions that you're gonna have to make some tough calls on that could cause people to have bad feelings about you and make you regret having run for this office? What are the big questions facing Minneapolis schools in the next term?
I think one of the things is the, is dealing with some of the fallout of the comprehensive district design, the CDD. There are a lot of people that are upset about that. It has changed a lot of the boundaries. And so students who used to be able to walk to school now have to be bused 30 minutes. That puts an issue on parents. Do they have to decide between their job and getting their kid to school on time? And we're only in year one. And so there are some big changes that are coming next year as well. And so, you know, I think that, one thing that I think is important that people know though, when I'm out campaigning, is I'm starting to talk to people about what the board can actually kind of specifically do. So I myself, or a group of us, cannot necessarily come in and just say, well, we're gonna redraw the boundaries. We are the ones who approve the policy that the superintendent puts together. And so I think that, you know, I don't know if this is gonna be something that's gonna make people necessarily angry. It might take some time to figure out if it works out or not. But honestly, the biggest thing that we have to kind of be focused on here is in the first four, in those four years, you know, the most important decision we're gonna have to make is gonna come in the first six months. We have to hire a new superintendent. And so, you know, this is gonna come down to a values game here. And so, you know, who, are we gonna find someone that's gonna represent the values that I hold? Are there gonna be board members who have different values? How are we gonna have that conversation? How that's gonna work out? And so, you know, you're gonna make a decision and, you know, you're gonna make people angry with your decision. You know, you mentioned earlier, I'm running citywide. There's no way you're gonna get 100% of the people on your side with every decision you make. And so I'm just gonna make sure that whatever these decisions are, it's gonna, it's gonna reflect back into my values and how I feel about public education.
So when we talk about the comprehensive district design and like, the goals of that was, we're trying to make the system more equitable, looking for integration. And like, when you tackle big, big problems like that, there are winners and losers. And some people are really, really upset. Like, how do you? And obviously like, schools can't solve all of society's problems by themselves, but you could take a crack at some of them. Like, how do you do that without creating, and maybe you can't, maybe you can't do it, without creating winners and losers and like, bad feelings? And some people are perfectly happy with the status quo. Like, it works for me and my family. And, you know, it could be perfectly reasonable to believe, well, I like things how they are for my family. I don't want it to change. Is there a way to address those big equity issues and not create winners and losers? Or reduce the number of people who are just very upset that things are changing and they don't want things to change? Because this is a question that is like, every level of politics, like, people fighting change. And sometimes for very like, self-interested and like, reasonable reasons for them. But like, how do you navigate that for the schools locally?
Well, I think one thing, first of all, in terms of the comprehensive, you know, the CDD, there needs to be a better job explaining what the benefits of it were supposed to be. I think that we're hearing from a lot of parents that are not understanding why this is going on. And so I think a better job needs to be done in terms of making that explanation. You know, in the larger picture, I kind of equate, now, if I were to be elected, because people have been asking me, what are we gonna do about the CDD? I have not yet had a conversation with Eric Moore, who I believe is the one in, basically kind of in charge of the CDD. I guess I would approach this almost the way that what I do on my job on a daily basis. So if we have a student and we've got their individual education plan, the IEP, we set a goal for them for, for one year. From where we're at this meeting date, where are they gonna be one year from now? There are also the, at minimum, two objectives that we have there. So I'd like to kind of sit down with them and say, all right, we are one year into this. Where were we expected to be and where are we actually going to be? And then rather than just start barreling ahead with the plan for year two, let's take a breath, slow down, start talking to people about where these problems are, do kind of what, like what you had said, stop kind of trying to make this into a winners and losers thing. Try and start explaining to parents what the benefits are of how this whole situation is. I think you're right. We are not gonna make everybody happy. There are people that are talking about wanting to, you know, can we move the district lines back? Now, I don't know. I guess I would say anything is possible. But right now, I don't think, just from where I'm at, with the information that I know right now, I don't necessarily think that is necessarily the immediate right thing to do either. We just, we just got whiplash from the changes that we have now. We can't just whiplash everybody right back, you know? We'd have to understand, are we gonna create a whole nother set of problems? This has created a problem with the busing issues. And, and switching things back may again, just kind of compound those issues. So that's why I'm saying, let's, deep breath time, do a fair evaluation, no finger pointing and blaming. I'm not talking about that. But let's try and get a full understanding of where we're at, making sure that we're hearing from these parents that we are, that as we are phrasing it here, you know, that are feeling like they're losing out on this, have a more extensive conversation with them. Why do they feel like they're losing? Are there some of these issues that we can actually solve immediately before we start moving forward with phase two? I mean, if we don't deal with some of the issues here in phase one, they're just gonna be complicated with phase two.
So let's go to some smaller things. Like, what are some things that Colin Beechy has in your head that you want to do and you're like, nobody else is talking about this? These are maybe low-hanging fruit, easier things, less controversial things? Like, things you are particularly well-suited to like, say, hey, this is an issue. Let's tackle this, please? Anything like that that you're thinking about?
Sure, there's, there's two. I think one of them is an easy one, even though there would be some pushback, I think. And then there's one that was gonna be a much larger strategy, but is pretty important to me. First, in terms of the easy one, like, we were just talking about the comprehensive district design. And when I'm talking about, you know, wanting teachers to know that we have their back, I know what it means to be overworked. I know what it means to be given a new directive, but not given any time to do it, not giving them any space to do it, not being given any training to do any, some of these new things. So while all of these changes are going on, I've been speaking with a couple principals who are talking about possibly trying to do a moratorium for two years on any new initiatives that we're bringing down onto our schools, onto our principals, onto our teachers, any of that. Rather than do the new ones, let's go to work on what we have to fix here before we can take time to, I mean, it just, again, there are too many questions that even teachers have. There's gonna be a big shift in teachers from Washburn to, to North next year as part of the, this, the community and technical education program that's going on. So again, let's let people have, just adjust to even being in new schools, new principals, new positions before we start throwing a lot of these new initiatives on them. And one of the principals talked to me about how it's, every year it's a new initiative and we don't take the time to evaluate if the first one even took place. And so it's just, again, it's something that can take a little bit of a burden off some of our teachers. On a larger scale, I work at Transition Plus, so it is a special education school. I've been there for, for the entire eight years of them here. And I just think that there, we, we need to kind of have a pretty good look at to how we are intaking some of our Level Four students, how we are placing some of our Level Four students, and what some of the benefits that we are getting from.
What's a Level Four, what's a Level Four student?
Yeah, say thank you. That's, and so, so in special education, you, you can, there are federal level or setting, federal level settings that you can be assigned to. The further up you get, the more time you spend in a special education setting. Level one, level two students, the majority of their time are gonna be spent in the general education classroom. The minimum amount of time is gonna be spent in, you know, they're gonna be pulled out or someone's gonna be pushed in to be working with them in that classroom. When you start getting to Level Three and Level Four, because of some of their needs are a little bit more severe, and, and I'm not talking like, mean or violence, I have students, I'm in the, I'm in the developmentally, developmentally cognitive disabled program. And so I have students that are autistic, so non-verbal. We have students that need to be fed. We have students that need to be toileted, you know, those kind of things. So clearly, most of their day is gonna be spent in the special education setting. So that just has to do with how much time you are spending in the special education set. So it just, it's, it's, you know, if some details that I could, you know, I really don't want to kind of get into it because it's kind of dry for a lot of people. But if you are a special education teacher in Minneapolis, I think you know very well what I'm, what I'm talking about.
So let's talk about budget priorities. You describe a budget crisis for, for Minneapolis schools on your website. And I remember during the teacher's strike, you'd hear from the unions that, like, the, the school district is spending money on the wrong things. You got your priorities wrong. That's also something you've said on your website. So I'm wondering, like, where is the money being spent now that you feel like we could move that money around? Is this a significant amount of money? Like, where is it now and where should it go instead?
Yeah, so could I back up here for just a quick moment? Are you, are you familiar with how Minneapolis Public School is funded in the?
Beyond like taxes and stuff?
Okay, yeah. So, so, well, so, so we get money from the state of Minnesota. We get money from the federal government. I'm kind of looking at some.
That's a, that's a good thing to like, give people a primer on if you wanna very briefly go into that.
Sure. So we get money from the state of Minnesota and we get some general state aid. And that's the, that's that per pupil funding that you hear when you're talking about people that comes from the state. There's also then categories that come into that in terms of like, issues of the poverty level and the number of English language students that you have and the number of special education students that you have in your district. So that contributes to some of the funding that you get from the state. Now, we also get money from the federal government, but that flows, that also kind of flows through the state. And so these cover things like, like IDEA, the individual, or the, oh gosh, I can't remember. The Individual Disabilities Education Act, sorry. And so, but those are kind of limited funds that help fund public schools. So the state, majority of it's from the federal, or the state government. The federal government does help with some of these regulatory, I guess, issues that have. And then the final one is what you had just mentioned. It's for local and other, local taxes, property taxes, grants, those kind of things that we get from people. Now, as, as, so, okay, so right now, there is, we have about a $655 million budget. And the vast majority of our budget, I think in 2020, just, yeah, just last year, you know, salaries and benefits account for more than 80% of the expenses in this budget. So the other ones are coming from places like contracted services, issues like supplies, equipment, and then there's a miscellaneous category that's in there. So, you know, the salaries is, is really the, the big thing. And I think that was one of the big four pillars of what we went on, on strike for. So, you know, now as I'm in the position that I'm in, because, you know, I didn't really look at this before either. And I'm like, of course they've got the money. And same thing as the union said, their priorities are wrong. Now then, looking at the big numbers that are here in front of me, you know, it's, it's, it's difficult to kind of, kind of sit there and start going like, specifically I would do this and specifically I would move here. But things that I would be doing is, that's what I mean. What are some of the contracted services? And are some of those contracted services better served here, you know, locally? Can teachers be doing things? I do know that we have, we are contracting out to a couple of tutoring places. Now, you know, while at the same time, we have, you know, support professionals who are earning, you know, $24 an hour, 30, you know, and then $31,000 a year. You know, there are ways that we could work maybe some of them, giving them opportunities to do the tutoring process and it may end up saving money. Now, I don't know that for sure because I don't know what the actual dollars are that are going to the tutoring service. So, but that, I mean, so I really, my, my priorities really are for the people on the ground. You know, and I need to make sure that they've got the tools and services that they need. And so any shifting that I would be doing would be first, first of all, trying to at least try and make up for some of the shortcomings that they have in then some of those services, and then kind of move on from there. You know, in terms of salary, and I'm almost maybe backing up to your other question about something that no one is really talking about. I work at the Center for Adult Learning. And so there are the two schools in there. I work at Transition Plus. But we have an adult education program that works in the, across the lobby from us. And they have a contract that is, is, just is not sitting well with me. And so we need to take a look at that in terms of, look, teachers, we got a little bit of a raise. The ESPs got a little bit of a raise. There are now some support professionals that are gonna be coming, you know, needing to be taken care of as well. And so, you know, some of the priorities, I need to hear specifically from, again, the stakeholders on the ground as to what some of those things are that they need. If we're gonna make cuts, you know, I'm, I have been following what some other school districts have been doing around the country, other urban school districts that have been having some of the same problems that we have. I've been looking at ones from even well back in the early 2000s to see some of the improvements that they have made. And, you know, there's, I just believe that there's a way that we can go back to investing in our public schools. It may take a couple of years where it may not, we may take a little bit of a hit here or there in some way, shape or form. I'm not talking about messing with our bond rating or anything. But, but just kind of, again, shifting those priorities. So I do agree with the union on that, just, just based on the little things that I'm hearing. But I just really don't want to get super specific about something that I really don't know the full details on.
Okay.
That was a pretty rambling answer, my friend. I'm sorry.
This is a very rambling podcast. You don't have to apologize for that.
All right. I'm, I'm, listen, like I tell my friends, I'm a teacher, so I can talk for, for quite a while.
No, no apologies. I'm sorry. I'm not good at this. Just keep in mind, you're responding to some not, not all that great questions from a not great host.
See, now listen to me playing a teacher role. You're doing great.
So related to the budget, declining enrollment, you mentioned how money that comes from the state is impacted by declining enrollment. And one of the things on your website you mentioned that is maybe drawing families to bring their students to a, to different schools, pulling them out of MPS, putting them in charter school, putting them in private school, whatever the case may be, is culturally responsive programming. And it occurs to me, like, if I'm a Somali family and I want to send them to a Somali charter school run by like Somali people, and like, that's something you can do. And like, you, can you replicate that at MPS? Obviously, there are things you can do to be more culturally responsive, but I'm wondering like, is, is it too asymmetrical in terms of what a, like a charter can offer in that regard? I'm just curious about that. As something like, I don't know much about this. It just seems like reading your website and having that occur to me, like, that's, see, this is a very rambling question that I hope you can do something with, with your answer.
Yeah. So, you know, the charter schools, that's, that's obviously a topic of conversation that comes up, I think, for anybody who's running for, for school boards and how they, how they kind of feel on that. Just, first of all, just in general, without getting deep into the politics and all of this. I am, I am a pro-public school believer, and I'm gonna be an advocate for that. And so, you know, talking about the budget, you know, maybe there's some things we have to look at to kind of readjust some things. You know, I'm not happy with how the special education costs are distributed between the public schools and the charter schools. I'm not happy with the busing issues that, you know, I think we're paying all the busing. You know, and then there's a board that we have no oversight of. So it just doesn't kind of sit well with me, just sort of that feeling in general. But you know, listen, I, because of everything that's gone on, and I think that's important that people understand, whenever the charter school conversation is gonna be coming up with me, I just want parents to know that I have, I have no issues with parents who have to make whatever decision they have to make for their child. I completely understand that we've got to clean up our own house over here. But to answer your question, not only can we replicate what they are doing in some of these schools, I believe that we can do it better. And so it just is, again, it means that we've got to be much more responsive to our students and much more responsive to our parents. And I almost kind of say, like, it's, I want to start having people bring the public back into public education. You know, we have been for so long at Minneapolis Public Schools, it's been top-heavy. It's been a one-size-fits-all model. And so there's been a lot of directives as to how things are going. And so, you know, parents know a lot, you know? I mean, so let's give them an opportunity to be able to have a chance to participate in what's going on with their schools. And when I am talking to a lot of parents, I'm encouraging them to get involved in their school site councils. Now, their, their school site councils are, are, have to do with some of the revenue sources that come into their school, to their school directly. And some of the policies that they want to make from their schools. And if they want to help create some of the larger policies for Minneapolis Public Schools, it's a real good way to get involved with making some on-the-ground decisions that, that are going on. And so when you have, like you say, a large Somali population or a large immigrant population that we have, we have a lot of Spanish speakers in this, in our, in our district. And we, we so often hold events or have meetings or whatever it is, and we don't have adequate interpretation services. So now, if I'm gonna go sit in this meeting and I'm not understanding what's going on or I have to, you know, have someone, you know, replay it back to me secondhand, I'm not gonna feel very welcome there, right? And so we can have a public school where whatever the event is going on, just make sure that we've got its being presented in whatever language is happening in, in your school so that everyone is able to participate, everyone is able to be welcome. So, you know, and, and bringing parents back, I also kind of talk to a lot of people about just, you know, what does it look like specifically? You know, I don't know. You have to kind of maybe even go school by school. But, but, you know, we gotta start taking better care of the people who are here. The ones that are choosing to stay, the ones that are on the fence and are still willing to give us a chance. And so it just, again, my, my values are rooted in, I'm, I'm, I'm a people person. You know, I would love to give everybody everything that they want. I'm that kind of a person. But I also understand that that can't happen. The six years that I was working at those community colleges, you know, I was at the one, we had a $1 million budget that we were dealing with. Now, I didn't make the decisions because it was the students. I was their advisor. But we, we went through this whole process. So I know and understanding about requests that you get in, negotiations that you have to have with people, and the disappointment when you have to tell people, I can't give that to you, you know? And then, but then if you can't, but then there's always a list of solutions or suggestions. You know, here's how you could maybe help raise some money. Here's some people that we know help do fundraising, whatever it might be. And, you know, it's irritating that we have to talk about parents and families having to go out and doing fundraising. But we really need that money from the, from the state. Which, you know, to explain another, another part of the importance of this, this money from the state, there is, there is an $800 million gap right now between what they are, what the special education mandates are that they're putting on and what they're actually paying for. And so that gap needs to be closed. And so right now, because that gap is not being closed, what each school has to do is draw from their own general funds to pay for the special education funds that they are being required to pay, or they're required to serve, but are not given the money to do that. So, so that, that, that really has to be step one. That has to, that gap has to be closed. But now, that can't be the only thing to do with that. Because, you know, once again, there is, before the COVID pandemic, there was a mental health crisis that was already building. It's hit our students now. I just, I just was reading today that the ACT scores were the lowest that they've been in 31 years. Well, that has to do, that has to do with the pandemic, right? And so, and so they're, and so just in general, again, we need to also just, just slow down here. This is what I'm saying about putting pressure on, on teachers and students and parents. And, you know, look, we all know, and no one should be surprised about this, that, you know, a year of distance learning, a year of learning on the computer, trying to figure that out, is not an adequate education for people. And so rather than putting people in here now and saying, well, you're supposed to be here, well, no, we need to recognize and realize they are here. So we've got to back up here a little bit and meet them where they're at, rather than try and shove them through and try and get some of these things accomplished. But in the meantime, the point of what it was I was trying to make with that part was, you know, our, our, we need more counselors in our school. We need more nurses in our school. The ratios of what we have there are, are, you know, far too great. I think that they're probably double of what they're supposed to be. And so, um, you know, I think one of them, I don't know if it's the nurse or the counselor, it's supposed to be one for every 250 students and where I think that one to over 500. So, um, those are investments that we have to look back into in their school. And so is that a salary? Perhaps. But again, it's an investment that may not see a return for a very long time because we're talking about investing into our students.
I'm going to try, um, 35 minutes is our new, I promised you half an hour, 35 minutes is the new, uh, limit here I'm raising.
All right. I'm sorry. I didn't.
It's not your fault. Yeah. I always go long.
Okay.
It's not your fault. It's my, my fault. So a time, this could maybe like a personal question. It doesn't necessarily have to be education related. I'm sure you have a wide array of like civic interests, but like a time in your life where you were moved on an issue and like you got involved, you showed some passion and leadership. This is a leadership question, basically. Like, and you can take a few moments to think about it if you want. A time in your life where you were moved by an issue and you showed some leadership and like, what was that issue? What did you do? What was the outcome there?
Yeah. So honestly, um, that it's probably the most recent one that I did when I took on the equity lead role at, at my school. And when I, when I was talking with a lot of my teachers when, and, you know, again, this was during the unrest time and there were a lot of people that were feeling a lot of ways about they were like, I, I didn't really realize what was going on. I didn't know about a lot of this white supremacy culture thing. I didn't know that I was contributing to, to this. And so there were a lot of, you know, I have, I have a really good friend and I had to talk to him and I'm just like, just, look, stop beating yourself up right now, you know, you're learning something new, you know, you just, you can start to learn to do better here a little bit. But what, what I was getting from my whole staff is that, you know, what can we do? What can we do? And so I wanted to kind of design a, 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 a program, if you will, that was not so much in your headspace up here. I think that we needed to be up here, but, um, uh, you know, just actually what can they do? And so that's why we've gone into this culturally sustaining teaching because they are, and culturally responsive teaching because they are, it, it's, it's things they can do in their, in everyday lessons that they can do to help start to contribute with this. At the same time, when I have my equity presentations and, and, um, last year I was able to have, um, uh, speak to the staff for 20 minutes every, every three weeks. And it was kind of a rotating thing. But if I wanted to or if I needed to, there were a couple of times I went to my principal and I'm like, I need the whole hour. And he'd give it to me. And so we spent a lot of time just letting people know about, um, I, I, I kind of used a, um, something centered around what's called the cycle of socialization. And we did something about, um, identities, learning about some of your identities, ones that you are, that you automatically think about, ones that you don't think about. How do you put some of those identities, you know, how you, you know, value someone else's identities or think about someone else's identities? But it just kind of, it, it just all kind of worked into this whole thing where, where I wanted people to know that whatever it is that you're thinking or whatever it is that your beliefs are, whatever, um, you know, for most people, you are not the issue. It's your conditioning that is the issue. And so if we can kind of start understanding where some of these forces are coming from and why we're, and it goes, it goes back right to the very start. You know, and we're talking about, um, when you talk about students who are identifying now as non-binary and everyone's saying this is so new. Well, you know, it, it, historically it really isn't, but in terms of our culture, yes, it is. And why is that? Because, um, you know, right after you're born, you're given a pink blanket or you're given a blue blanket. So you're being trained for the, some of these things right from the very start. And so even in terms of having a baby now, it's even happening before you're even born, right? Cause people are having these gender reveal parties. So you're already being put into this cycle going around and around and around and around. And so now we also know that there is a way to get off this cycle and move on to a cycle that's called the cycle of liberation. And it's a much more fun to be because it's coming from a place of love and acceptance with people. And so that's, that's, that's sort of a, um, overarching view of, or process of what I'm doing with my staff, but, um, I'm getting, I'm getting a lot of buy-in. I'm getting a lot of positive feedback. I'm getting a lot of questions. I'm getting a lot of staff coming into my room that's like, oh, I think I messed up with this or whatever. And that's again, it's all right. Messed up, you know it now. Do better next time. So, um, you know, and we're also working with, how do you, how do you deal with situations? If, you know, when the tense situation comes up, there's ways that you can talk to people to bring them in rather than call them out. You know, when you're calling someone out, it's really kind of more about you than it is about that person. And when there's ways that you can start bringing that person in by starting to ask them questions, show them how you're interested in their viewpoint, but then try and ask them some other questions to make it some other way. Or help them, or give them, help them think about another viewpoint is all. So that, that, that's something that I just, I've been real proud of for the last two years. And it's something that if I'm elected, I will be really upset that I would have to let go.
Okay. The final question, it's going to be rapid fire, but I, I want you to take some time to think about it because I want people, it's a recommendation question. So think about the things, you probably live a very stressful life as a candidate and a teacher, things in your life that bring you some joy, three things. It could be a book, a movie, a walk in the park, a time with your animal or family, an experience that you can recommend to somebody else who lives in our area that they can do that will make them happy. And I want three things. I want them to be good things. They better be good or we'll think you're a boring person. But it, it's very wide, it's wide open. Most people ask the book question and I don't want to assume that anyone reads books, but, uh, give us three things that can make us happy.
Okay. Well, first, first, yeah. Um, I, 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 since I've been running, I have missed being able to put Hijinks, that's my dog, put him on a leash and, and go for a nice little walk and just stick in my headphones and listen to an audiobook as I'm, as I'm walking around. Um, so, so that's another one thing that I, that I kind of like doing in my kind of spare time to kind of help, you know, you got to take some time for yourself here in all this because it's, it's stressful. So I miss being able to do that. Uh, one thing that, um, I really enjoy doing, um, my partner and I, we love traveling. So I love to be able to recommend people to kind of just get out, even if it's, um,
Where should I go? Where should I go?
You know what? Head up to the, head up to the, head up to the North Shore, head up to the Bering Lakes area. You know, it's real pretty up there. I grew up right around there. Um, you know, if you got the time and the space, get on a plane, you know? Where's, what state haven't you been to that you'd kind of like to go to? What city haven't you been to that you haven't been to? I'm a huge fan, fan of New York City. Uh, we spent a year in San Francisco. I, I, I love San Francisco too. The third thing, you know, um, I, I do just like, um, um, binge watching some, some shows and just kind of being able to, uh, um, sometimes when I'm, when I'm sort of relaxing, I like, I like fiction and fantasy things. Cause I like just kind of being taken away someplace else and dealing with other things.
I need specifics.
Okay. Um, um, that wasn't specific.
You just said binge, you recommended binge watching. That's the most general recommendation ever.
Okay. Um, 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 and I can't, I guess I can't say House of Dragons because that's too, um.
You could say that. Why couldn't you say that?
I, I recommend the House of Dragon. Um, I, I, listen, and if you haven't watched Game of Thrones, or if you want to go re-watch Game of Thrones, I, 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 okay, I'm kind of a nerd about the tutors and the plantagenates.
I got that from the bow tie.
Okay. Yeah. So I know, so, so, so I know more about them than most Americans should, but, but the Game of Thrones, if you understand the Wars of the Roses and you watch the Game of Thrones, you're kind of like, oh, this scene is actually this battle and this person is actually based on this character. And so, um, yeah, those, is that a little more specific or is that still?
Yeah, those are, you did, you did very well. I coached you through it, but I think you, you met my criteria. You did, gave me three and they were specific. Okay. I think that's the end of the show.
All right.
This has been the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards. My guest has been Colin Beechey, candidate for Minneapolis School Board at Large, which means everyone in the city gets to vote. And I'd like to put in a plug for the Sahan Journal's candidate questionnaire, which I thought was well put together, which I consulted prior to this conversation. So go, go and seek that out if you have the chance. Thank, thank you, Colin, for joining me.
Yeah, thanks, John. I appreciate it. It was nice talking to you.